Hater Thompson.
Here.
DeCarly.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Quint.
Here.
Shribs.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Let's stand, all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to your Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence, please. To begin this meeting, I often look up and down the dais and see if anyone has any agenda changes before we begin with the posted agenda. Seeing none, we're adopting tonight's agenda as posted, which leads us to our Proclamations for the evening. Our first proclamation is for Latino AEX Heritage Month. And I'd like to invite Herman Hernandez, Board of the Los Cien's Sonoma County Latino Leaders, and also Emily Stillman and Elliot Enriquez of the co-directors of our Cafe Puente. So please come forward while we get to read. And friends, too. Okay. Let's see. So, whereas the City of Petaluma recognizes the Latino AEX Heritage Month by honoring the histories, cultures, and contributions of community members whose ancestors came from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and whereas the City of Petaluma is committed to continuing building a welcoming and neighborly community, embracing diversity, and fostering equity for every resident. Whereas more than 21% of the City of Petaluma's population identifies as Hispanic or Latin American, Spanish is the second most spoken language in the community, and 35% of the school age population is Latino AEX. And whereas more than 60 million people in the United States identify as Hispanic or Latin American, representing over 18% of the population nationwide, Latin Americans continue to enrich our nation's character, shape our common future, and strengthen America's promise. And whereas Mexico and Chile also celebrate their independence during Latino AEX Heritage Month on September 16th and 18th respectively, and whereas National Latino AEX Heritage Month is observed from September 15th to October 15th to recognize the contributions made by Hispanic and Latin Americans in the United States and celebrate their heritage and culture. And whereas fostering a welcoming environment for all individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, or place of origin enhances Petaluma's cultural, economic growth, global competitiveness, competitiveness, and overall prosperity for current and future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Latino AEX Heritage Month in the City of Petaluma. And encourage Petalumans to share in this special annual tribute through participating in the Historical and Cultural Preservation Committee, other community events, to learn about and celebrate the generations of Hispanic and Latin Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. And may I add, there is no better time to make this statement than this time in our country. So thank you for being here to receive this.
Yeah, thank you.
May I? Please say.
Mayor, councilors, city managers, everyone here, thank you so much. On behalf of the Petaluma Health Center, Los Cien, Cafe Puente, it's an honor to be here to receive this proclamation. Everything that you just said is a breath of fresh air right now for my community. This year has been a very challenging year. We've been constantly under attack. And the attacks don't stop. So every time that we get a chance to receive support from esteemed individuals from our community, it sends a strong message of hope. And we thank you so much. Please keep supporting us.
We also have a proclamation tonight for National Preparedness Month. And like to invite Tom Jordan, our Emergency Manager for the city, to the podium to accept the proclamation and to also to introduce all of the organizations who have joined us tonight. And I'll read the proclamation here. And it's whereas September is recognized nationally as Preparedness Month, a time to encourage individuals, families, neighborhoods, businesses, and institutions to take proactive steps to prepare for emergencies of all types. And whereas the Ready.gov campaign reminds us that emergencies can happen at any time and in any place, and that being prepared through creating emergency plans, assembling go-to kits, go-kits, and staying informed saves lives and speeds recovery. And whereas the City of Petaluma affirms that preparedness requires strong coordination through standardized emergency management systems, including those close partnerships with the County of Sonoma, the operational area jurisdictions, the state, and federal partners, and such as our very fine United States Coast Guard Training Center, Petaluma, and our city-affiliated, community-based organizations whose tested and proven capabilities extend assistance to our residents, visitors, and regional neighbors during times of need. Whereas the Petaluma Fire Prevention Bureau plays a critical role in community risk reduction, advancing fire safety through inspections, public education, vegetation management, and preparedness programs, and protects lives and property during the fire season and beyond. Whereas the resilience of the city depends not only on government readiness, but on the readiness of residents and businesses alike, taking action to prepare themselves and look out for vulnerable neighbors, thereby strengthening our collective ability to respond and recover. Whereas the commitment of the city employees to service during both routine operations and emergencies is a testament to the one Petaluma spirit, ensuring that together we build safer, more resilient future for all who live, work, and visit here. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month in the City of Petaluma, and urge all residents to visit Ready.gov and the city's emergency preparedness webpages to learn how to make a plan, build a kit, stay informed, and get involved. And because preparedness today builds resilience tomorrow. Thank you.
Mayor McDonald, council members, City Manager Flynn, and community members and honored guests. My name is Tom Jordan, and I serve as the Emergency Manager for the city's Emergency Management Program. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of proclamation recognizing September 2025 as National Preparedness Month here in the City of Petaluma. As the proclamation reminds us, preparedness is not just a checklist. It's a shared responsibility. It starts with individual action, but it thrives when we work together, neighbor to neighbor, organization to organization, across city and county lines, and in close coordination with our state and federal partners. In Petaluma, we understand that community building is the best disaster resilience action. When we prepare together, we're not just building plans and kits. We're building trust, capacity, and connection. And in times of crisis, that makes all the difference. We've seen it firsthand. Whether it was during wildfire evacuations, power outages, floods, or regional extreme temperature weather patterns, our community didn't hesitate. Volunteers stepped up. Organizations mobilized. Neighbors looked out for each other. And we saw faith-based groups open their doors. Community-based organizations stretch their reach, and local radio stations keep people informed when it mattered the most. Because of that, we're proud today to recognize some incredible partner organizations who help strengthen Petaluma's resilience year-round, and who are joining us in chambers this evening to support the proclamation. Petaluma People's Service Center, represented today by Megan Kelly. We've got a few folks lost a hold of the end, but Megan got that. Salvation Army Petaluma, represented by David Adams. Rebuilding Together Petaluma, represented by Drake Cunningham. KPCA 103.3 FM, Radio Petaluma, represented by Rob Tomazas. Our Sonoma Co-Ad or the community organizations active in disaster, represented by Elaine Tokolahi and Kendall Jarvis. American Red Cross Northern California Coastal Region, represented by Paula Roberts and Leila Leland Montel. Thank you, Paula. Cool Petaluma, represented by Natasha Juliana. And as you might have noticed, we have a uniformed presence in the room. And that is our local Scout Troop Nine, represented by John Schumpf, and several scouts and their families. And I'd be remiss, I'm sure on the dais, all of you are aware, but don't miss their 13th Annual Preparedness Fair. It's going to be held in Walnut Park. That's going to be on the 28th as usual. To our intergovernmental partners, whose collaboration is essential, the County of Sonoma Department of Emergency Management, represented by Director Jeff Duval and some of his staff. The California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, represented by Kevin Wazeski. And the United States Coast Guard Training Center, Petaluma, represented by their commanding officer, Captain John Birch. Your service, collaboration, and commitment to the Petaluma community have helped make this city grow more resilient year in and year out. Looking ahead, we're excited to further build our disaster resilience partnerships, to expand training, improve outreach, and make sure that every neighborhood and individual have the tools and connections they need to face emergencies. As the proclamation says, in community we find resilience. And I'll add, in resilience we find hope. Hope rooted in our ability to come together, adapt, and care for one another. To close, I want to leave you with some words. The strength of a community is not measured by the absence of crisis, but how we come together when it counts most. Let's continue to empower, equip, and celebrate our community, the true backbone of disaster resilience. Thank you. And if I could ask our group to come to the front, we'll take a quick photograph with everybody in it.
And that brings us to our next part of the agenda, for those who are going to join us for the next. I'll let, leave those exiting a minute to exit. Next on the agenda tonight is general public comment. And during general public comment, the public is invited to make comment on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction, and that are not listed on the current agenda. So public comments are limited up to three minutes per person. And depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. If we have more than 20 wishing to speak, we'll put the additional comments to be heard after the last business item on the agenda. So I'd like to ask our clerk if we've received any prior comments in, and then to read our message.
We have received comments ahead of time. We received seven general public comments, and those are posted on the online agenda packet. And at this time, I will start a 30-second clock. And during these 30 seconds, members of the public should bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
We're just getting used to having you on the opposite hand of the room. So, let's see. It looks like we have 10 general public comment cards tonight, and the math, if I'm right, is to two minutes. Please set the clock at two minutes per. And our first speaker will be Dave Alden, to be followed by Nicola Fry.
This reversal of the room really is disconcerting. I'm not sure I know how to speak left-handed, but I'll do what I can. I am Dave Alden of Petaluma Urban Chat. As hopefully many of you already know, we'll be hosting our third annual Better Petaluma Film Festival on September 24th, trying to bring you new ideas and new ways of thinking about land use. We took a different approach this year. Rather than going through a service to find the films we're going to show, we went online, YouTube, et cetera, looking for things that really we thought spoke best to Petaluma. That was a lot more work than we thought it was going to be. We may not do it again, but I'm real happy. It did bring some new voices to the film festival we haven't heard before. Peter Calthorpe, Howard Blackson, Grayson Johnson, Dan Herijus, and others, folks I've known for years. And I'm pleased that we are able to hear them in our film festival for the first time. We've always benefited from having council members at that festival engaging with us, especially at the pizza afterwards, good conversations. Thus, you will all receive a complimentary ticket to the film festival in the email within the next week or so. We hope you can be there. The event, as before, will be at the Boulevard Cinemas. Six o'clock, we can begin socializing in the lobby. Seven o'clock, the films will begin showing. And nine o'clock, we reconvene at Hanks to chat until late in the evening. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicola Fry, to be followed by Lila Dusterov.
Tonight, I'm representing the Senior Advisory Committee, and we are inviting Petaluma residents and other interested persons to a free senior resources symposium empowering our seniors, caregivers, family, and community. It will take place on Saturday, October 11th, from 8:30 to 3:30. The event is sponsored by the Petaluma Senior Advisory Committee. It will be at the community center, and will include also a free lunch. Joining Rebuilding Together Petaluma and many other groups and individuals for more than 35 breakout sessions, over 50 information tables, a unique wellness zone, and other interesting displays, including the new RTP mobile, bookmobile, and a slideshow about the proposed public safety facility. So much, much more. We hope to see all of you there. October 11th, 8:30 to 3:30.
Thank you. Lila Dusterov, to be followed by Catherine Bobowski.
Hello, my name is Lila Dusterhoff, and I live in Midtown Petaluma. I'm here to present suggestions to improve the Lynch Creek Trail and make it feel safer and cleaner. Two of the main issues facing the trail are trash and graffiti. To deal with the trash, I am suggesting that the city send bimonthly cleanups along key areas of the trail. Additionally, placing more trash cans along the trail would be extremely helpful, ideally fully enclosed ones. My neighbors have told me they would love to participate in the community clap, the community trash cleanups that the city organizes each year. Providing more signage and notice to the community about these cleanups would be wonderful. To deal with the graffiti, I suggest that the city put in measures to deter it by painting over it regularly with darker paint or anti-graffiti paint, or installing surveillance. Additionally, providing signage about the graffiti hotline would help to involve the community so we can all work together to make our trail cleaner and safer. Over 50 people have signed my petition to state that they are in support of these measures. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And I need to remind all the audience that if you do not have enough time for your comments in the two-minute time, or if you wish otherwise, sending in your comments via email gets them distributed all directly to council and read at council. So sometimes both is even better. Next, Catherine Bobowski, to be followed by Jody Johnson.
Yes, my name is Captain Bobowski. I live at the Littlewoods Village Mobile Park. I did some investigating on Harmony. I found there has been evidence, Harmony's been, there's been complaints filed against Harmony with the District Attorney statewide, Attorney General, the Better Business Bureau for unfair business practices, and also for misleading cities doing rent gouging, breaking all the laws. And they should be stopped right now. They should be put out of business. They've been doing, breaking laws. And two, they didn't give all the residents notice about the closure of the park at all. They didn't give it to the on-site manager, her family, and her friends. And also, too, that's against the law. And also, too, they've been, are also stalking my mobile home 24 hours a day, 24 hours a day, the manager's family. That's against the law. And also, too, they're pressuring, Harmony's pressuring residents to sell their mobile home to Harmony so they could sell the mobile home for higher rent, I mean, higher money, and rent the space for higher money.
Thank you. Jody Johnson, to be followed by Tim Portius.
Mayor, City Council, city staff, tonight we speak to you first from grateful hearts. On August 4th, you met this moment with courage, grace, and concern for your fellow Petaluma neighbors. Notably, on August 4th, our Mobile Park residents were given the gift of hope by each of you. In those moments when you may think you are not making the difference you set forth to do in this service to Petaluma, please remember our grateful hearts and a spring of hope in our steps that did not exist hours before your vote. We want to set the record straight as we always have strived to do. From the moment the rent stabilization ordinance was amended and the onslaught of retaliation occurred in three of our parks, we came publicly to address our concerns at every city council meeting. We were transparent and certainly gave the park owners an open forum to dispute anything spoken out loud. We have been at every city council meeting for well over two years. We produce facts supported by evidence that had been happening secretly in all of our parks for years. We always knew what we were publicly putting on the record. You knew what we were bringing to light. The community knew what we were bringing to light. We are not engaged in secret behind-the-scenes communication to deliver our complaints or information. We spoke to the city about complaints and violations, and we always laid the complaints and violations in public at every city council meeting for well over two years. In 2025, all park owners' communication to you in the city was done secretly, either one-on-one or behind the scenes. This nature of communication without public input denies a rebuttal in person from any resident. So on August 4th, hearing park owners' words directly used by some city council members was a bit alarming. We heard closing of loopholes on an already settled revised 2023 rent stabilization.
Thank you. Tim Portius, to be followed by Jennifer Boyle.
Ordnance was heavy-handed. We remind you and the community and the park owners, and are grateful that you voted in a less costly arbitration. You voted in a defined method of MNOI for any arbitrator to use in determining if a park owner deserved more ground rent than established yearly for 31 years. You voted that arbitration could only happen once a year. You voted to confirm your intent from the beginning that no legal fees were to be awarded. You voted for more transparency in reporting of rent rolls, compensations, management compensation. You voted to close a loophole being used to circumvent your settled vacancy control of 31 years. You voted to define more clarity for operating expenses and more. The false narrative pitched to you in secret communication by park owners was simply that. It's false. The comments made and the words of park owners acted as if we were revising the ordinance, and they deserved to undo all the protection in place for years because they believed the rent stabilization ordinance does not benefit their bottom line. On August 4th, there was a closure of loopholes. Because of a predatory nature, they were being used to harm Mobile Park residents who are all residents of Petaluma. Everything park owners were threatening, using secret letters to the city or addressing through city council members themselves, had all been tried in '23, when park owners had stakeholder meetings or called in on Zoom, their preferred method of public comment. Thoughtfully, the city researched, the council weighed in, and the votes were taken in 2023. So secretly, once again...
Thank you. Jennifer Boyle, to be followed by Janice Barker. Thank you. Janice Barker, to be followed by Tina Yonkers.
Good evening. So secretly, once again, park owners attempted to reverse the vote in 2023 on a closing of loophole vote just last month. Residents speak the truth, and we are not afraid to stand up in public at every meeting if necessary to state these truths. We're also not afraid to hear opinions that are against, that are against our facts. The why is simple. Because the truth is on our side, and we do not need to communicate with you only in secret where others cannot debate their credibility. The city and the council were threatened by park owners in that secretive letter you received on the morning of August 4th with millions of dollars of litigation if you made, if you made a vote that did not benefit the park owners. It's that simple. Mobile Park residents have been preyed upon by the bad actor large investment groups, group owners in secret. Not telling residents that there was, there is rent stabilization up in ground rents upon turnover that are to remain the same under the RSO, charging residents different ground rents for the same-size lotter location, coercing long-term leases with pass-throughs, and so much more. In secret, this is, this, in secret is how this happened by park owners. And communications to you all by them is still secret and not at any city council meeting in the public that we have attended. We ask you to understand in the future, to understand this secret communicate, this secretive communication. Vacancy control has been here since 1994. Vacancy de-control has not. Large investment groups bought parks and...
Thank you. Tina Yonkers, to be followed by Angie Cruz.
Thank you. Good evening. Large investment groups bought parks in 2020, 2024, knowing the City of Petaluma has vacancy control. Obviously, sophisticated investors would not buy into a park without proven profitability. You are an example of a city council who sees our residents, enacts ordinances, and overlays in the best interest of your residents, and certainly knows that park owners and park residents are both needed for a mobile park to operate. We own our mobile homes and simply rent the land. mobile park to operate. We own our mobile homes and simply rent the land. While we go through two or more arbitrations with closure processes happening by same-park-owners lawsuits and two appeals, we hold on to that glimmer of hope that you gave us on August 4th. In 2020, 2023, and 2024, and I'm running out of time, we were residents living our lives in a mobile home we purchased and maintained. We did not bring this litigious, litigious fight to you or to the park owners. The park owners chose greed and egregious actions and brought that to our door. We just merely defended our homes, our rights, and our heart fought protections. Together, let's not go in secret and, and take away the rights of our human, or rather, I should say, our humble residents. Again, we lead our comments with grateful hearts, and again, thank you for the glimmer of hope that normal life may be restored for our seniors and our vulnerable residents.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight, Angie Cruz.
He was just a little bit left here.
We are proud of you, each of you, and so are residents in cities everywhere that envision, envision the same courage taking place in their cities and their counties because they're coming for them, too. Your mark is notable among many. Thank you for your consent calendar second reading vote. Petaluma residents united strong. And then I just have my own thing. So, yes, we are very, very grateful for all your support. We, the actual residents and constituents of your community, these, these protections, like they said, close the loopholes, and it will not change the retaliation and what Harmony is already doing. So I can understand that that's a fear and that you all may want to protect us in some way, but that's already been happening for two years. Closing loopholes is not going to change that. As you all know, Littlewoods went through their first arbitration about two years ago. Harmony was claiming that they're not making money, that the ordinances are too restrictive. And then a month later, they bought Capri. And a month later, they started doing the same thing to Capri. They want to close Littlewoods, now they want to close Capri. Why would you buy a park in the same town with the same ordinances, the same restrictions, in quotes, if you aren't making money, if it's not a feasible investment? So I think that's something to keep in mind, and I know we reiterate that again and again. But these protections would really give your constituents the same rights as other homeowners and some peace of mind to know that we have an equal playing field and that we're not going to get taken advantage of. We are not afraid, and we're not going to back down, so we hope that you all won't either. And we hope that you vote yes on the second reading tonight. Thank you. And let me just gather this stuff.
Thank you very much. And that closes general public comment for the evening. And that brings us on up to council for council comments.
Leila, Leila? Could I just make a quick comment? I, we've connected in email. Let's go ahead and connect and talk. Now I see who your parents are, so that's great. But the other thing I just wanted to tell you today at my Sonoma County Transportation meeting, the Lynch Creek Trail funding is $1,620 for improvements on that trail. So I'll go ahead and talk with city manager about how we can work on cleanups and also garbage cans down there, how that is feasible and how it works. So I will email you again. Okay, thanks. Thanks for coming.
And we just got trash cans, extra trash cans delivered today.
Okay. Bringing it back to council comments. And tonight for council comments, I'd like to start off to the left with council member Shrebs.
Thank you. There was a nice break we had the last, last couple of weeks from our normal meetings and everything, but only these meetings, but there's still plenty of other things that, that like all of us seem to participate in, lots of meetings. There's bike rides, there's nonprofits, PWA Relief I participated in, individual meetings, North Bay Watershed Association, Climate Commission, Ag and Open Space, and a few Zoom webinars. So we, we still stay, stay pretty busy, even though this was supposed to be a break. Let's see, other things, though, I did complete my ADU journey in video format. So if anybody's just looking at how to build an ADU in a garage, I've got two videos out there along with the documentation to support and advice for anybody who is interested in ADU construction, how to get started and what to do once you do. Another activity was the Abundance Book. Besides reading that, there was a couple of book clubs I participated in discussing the book Abundance. And then I got so excited, I went ahead and joined. There's actually a network of electeds for abundance. So there's lots of mayors across the U.S. that are going to be mentoring current mayors and council members and folks out there. There was openings, two openings happened this, the last couple of weeks. One was for the library, I think we'll, one may mention that, but it's fantastic. Impressed with the lighting, the, the sound reduction rooms, which are really cool, if nobody's seen, seen those before. And then the children's area, there's lots more engagement type of activities and, and to be working out there. So a lot more things for this children to do in that area. There was also Petaluma Wetten's Alliance. We had the opening for the Scholenberger Park, what we're calling the Gathering Circle. So that's a tiny little amphitheater for classroom activities, but also for community events. And then I just got accepted. I'll be joining the Police Academy this turnaround, which starts, I think, the next week. So that's like an eight-week program. I'll be doing that on a weekly basis to learn more about the police actions. And other upcoming things that maybe I think about, we have a bounty plant sale coming up on Saturday, Craft Beer Festival coming on Saturday. We have the Climate Restoration Film on the 20, 27th. And then we have the river cleanup on the 20th, all Saturdays on that. And something that I just, looking at, China's come up with some new battery technology, which is actually maybe incorporated here in a couple of cars. So anybody looking for that, new batteries, systems that are more powerful and faster charging. Anyway, that's what's going on in China, and hopefully will be brought here soon. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Council member Quint.
Thank you. I'm going to take a, a bit of an unorthodox approach here tonight. I was so moved with this editorial that, that appeared in Friday's Argus that I, I think it's important and I want to share it. It's titled "Pedestrians' Death Shows Why Slower Streets Matter." Walking a dog or making a short trip to the grocery store shouldn't be dangerous, but too often it is on local roads. Several cities in Sonoma County are taking steps to address the problem. But ultimately, the solution lies with everyone who gets behind the wheel. The recent death of nineteen-year-old Natalie Fisher at a crosswalk near Northwest Community Park in Santa Rosa was a stark reminder of just how quickly lives can change while performing what should be a simple, uneventful errand. Fisher, a 2024 graduate of Maria Carrillo High School, and a student at Santa Rosa Junior College, hoped to build a career in trauma medicine. She wound up on the wrong side of that equation when a car struck her while she was, pardon me. Speed, drugs, and alcohol do not appear to have been a factor in her death, though the collision remains under investigation. Whatever the cause it is, yet another terrible incident that demonstrates that local streets are not as safe as they should be. Local governments are making smart changes to improve safety. The Santa Rosa Council recently decided to lower the speed limit on more than two dozen street segments. The limit will drop by five miles per hour on each stretch, and placards will alert drivers to the, to the change. Police will issue warnings during a thirty-day grace period, then begin ticketing drivers who do not heed the new speed limit. The move follows a, a reduction of speed limits on fifteen street segments in downtown Santa Rosa in late 2023. Enforcement is key. Some drivers might complain about speed traps, but traffic patterns and engineering studies show that lower speeds will mean fewer collisions and injuries and fatalities. This summer at Hillsburg, city council approved speed limit reductions on a dozen streets. During the discussion of that change, Sonoma County Transportation Planner Margot O'Connaughton noted a study showing that pedestrians and cyclists hit by cars traveling at forty miles an hour have only a thirty-five percent chance of survival, but reducing the speed to twenty-five miles an hour increases the survival rate to eighty-nine percent. In the unincorporated community of Pengrove, where dozens of injuries and multiple fatalities have occurred in recent years, Sonoma County is looking at lower speed limits and is installing roundabouts that will reduce the potential for T-bone collisions. Communities can change the rules of the road and rebuild intersections, but they need help from drivers, bikers, and pedestrians to truly improve safety. Everyone must follow the new rules and traffic patterns. They must also remain aware of their surroundings, look both ways, be aware of the potential hazards such as setting sun in the evening. Nothing is so critical that it justifies racing to reach the destination and endangering lives of others. No changes to traffic rules will prevent every accident and every fatality, but if people use some common sense, there will be fewer tragedies like this. Thank you.
Thank you for that important message. Council member DeCarly.
Good evening. Welcome back, everybody. First up, Airport Commission. The other day, we were focused on maintaining operation systems that pilots use, discussing a lot of older equipment, how to maintain it. Hangar usage is always a, a big topic. And, and then the sheep grazing project and as to whether that was maybe appropriate out there where if one were to get out on the runway, it wouldn't be good. And then our, at our Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association meeting up in Cloverdale, the presentation at the end was by Sonoma Water. It was an update on the project up in Potter Valley, which, quick recap of that is, you know, losing Lake Pillsbury, which is a major water supply for us, part of our water supply. And the biggest takeaway from that was the executive director of the new entity that's going to govern all that, the Ilorushan Project Authority, he admitted that there was actually a, a little loophole in the contract where tribes can basically turn the water off through the diversion tunnel. So I don't know where that will go, but that's, that's concerning. And so it, it caused a lot of cities, you know, different mayors and councils to speak up at that meeting and, and, you know, question what's really going on. I also attended another meeting with Congressman John Garimandi. He's down in the eighth district, Solano County and other areas. He's working on what's called the Ships Act. And the Ships Act is a bipartisan bill. It's the most comprehensive piece of legislation for the maritime industry for our area to rebuild the commercial maritime industry, Mount Mary Island, Richmond, the, the Greater Bay Area. You know, it would be a hundred million dollars and, you know, all used to upgrade the infrastructure to begin rebuilding ships in the United States. And I think that's really a great thing for us. You know, those, those areas have suffered in, in recent years since Mary Island was shut down. And, you know, we currently, our military has only about fifty ships in service, which is hard to imagine. And a lot of those ships are timing out, so we really do need to do something soon. You know, he's, he's working in Washington to get that passed, and hopefully that's something that Petaluma can benefit from, is there will be a lot of supported, supporting industry that's needed as well. And then last Saturday was the annual PEF fundraiser. They raise hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to help programs and schools here in Petaluma. That's always a fun one to attend if you can. They raised a lot of money this year, had a very successful event. And they also have, if you don't know, a thrift shop in town called Alphabet Soup that also helps support these programs. So if you can, support them through that. And that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. Yeah, that PEF fundraiser, just amazing what they do in the community. Glad you were able to go.
Yeah, and the mayor was out there cutting the rug, too.
And council member Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a planning commission meeting where we got an update on various state housing laws, including those that are working their way through this year. I want to just thank you, Mr. Quint, for, for reading that article. I have written down here, "School's back in session. Please drive safely." I can't say it enough. I get comments from people being critical of the changes that we're making to the roadway. Everything we're doing is to, to try and make the road safer and save lives. And there's a, definitely a personal component of that, too. So thank you for shining light on that. That's all for me.
Thank you very much. Council member Kater Thompson.
Thank you. And council member Quint, I actually had some comments down that I don't have to say now. I really appreciate that you read that because I read it. And, you know, when we're going to be seeing the ATP program, agenda items soon, I think we need to really think of safety. And that's what we're doing. We're not trying to take parking away. We're not trying to make people inconvenience. It's really about saving lives. And so thank you for that. I, too, was at the event with Congressman John Garimende. It was really interesting learning about the Ships Act. And really, the goal is to build at least ten percent of the ships in the United States and then go ahead and open up ports that are now closed. And that there, what was really interesting, that there's, in case China decided to start a war with us, we have about fifty days of ships, you know, to be able to go back and forth. And it was a little bit concerning. He did not ask us to, to send anything to Washington and supported the Ships Act because we're really not on the waterways, but it's something maybe the city manager could look at to see if that's something we should or could do. And I'll send you the email that I received. And to my Mobile Park Friends, we hear you, we see you, and we are with you, and we'll continue to do that. On October 3rd, there's going to be a ribbon cutting for the 101, final phase of the widening in between Petaluma and Nevada. And it's going to be, I, I thought it was going to be done in 2023, but it's not. But we're here, and so that's what's great. And so it's going to be at 10:00 a.m. at Olompo Valley State Historic Park. And for people that want to ride bikes there, you go at Petaluma Boulevard, go underneath the bridge, and you can get right onto that roadway. I'm not sure if I'm going to do that or not. And then on October 4th, at 10:30 a.m. at the Smart North Station, the pathway is going to be dedicated. So ride your bikes or bring your walking shoes, and we'll all get to Pengrove and back. And, and as I said earlier about the Lynch Creek Trail, that was great news. But today, at SCTCA, we were really talking about safe routes to schools. And there's a really good, I don't know, it's just information that maybe we can get on our website for parents to look at. And a lot of it was on e-bikes and what parents need to know, because that seems to be a real problem. And so it was just good information. And then last week, I went to McKinley School because somebody asked me to go because of crossing concern. And the city is already looking at making that change. So that was great. And as far as speed limits, I agree. They need to really be reduced. And I was on McDowell the other day, and this guy is going at least sixty miles an hour passing me. And so I honked on my horn, he slowed down, and then flipped me off, and then drove into his driveway. But it just was really unsafe. And let's see. And then the other thing is, in the northeast area in Petaluma, there's really problematic cell service, and we know that. And so, yeah. And so, Council member Barnacle and I were on a Zoom meeting today with, having a discussion with, actually, Dylan Lloyd, who ran against me. And the three of us were on a Zoom talking about steps to move forward to see what can be done. It's not an easy and short process, but I just want you to know we're on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. And anyone who wishes to bike to the 101 ribbon cutting can contact me. I've got several mayors and council members joining me on that ride. So, whether permitting. Vice Mayor, now.
Thank you. A quick recap of last month in my city council comments tonight. I attended the Petaluma Night Out at the Fairgrounds the day after our last meeting. And if you've never been to one, make sure that you get it on your calendar for next year. And because I am, don't have a lot of time, it's a wonderful place to connect with our fire department, our police department, our sheriff's department. We had a lot of different community groups that you saw here tonight had booths at the Petaluma Night Out. I represented the city of Petaluma at Girls State American Legion Event at the Veterans Memorial Building. I attended a Zone 2A meeting where the city and county staff showed us slides of our city of Petaluma general plan frameworks for flood zones. You can You can go on our city website and see what I saw. I represented the City of Petaluma at the Sonoma County Mayor and Council Members Meeting in Cloverdale. Councilmember DeCarly already talked about what the main meeting was about with all the members, but the mayor's meeting was Santa Rosa is really cracking down. Thank you. I was looking for a politically correct word. On their massage parlors, and it's, they have 112. So they're shutting them down that aren't legal, and they're afraid to, that they're going to come into our city and some of the other Sonoma County cities. So that's something for the police chief and the city manager to look out for. I attended the ribbon cutting for both the Petaluma Library and the new public art at the Kennelworth Rec Building. We got schwag, so I have to have my show and tell for the opening. And I got a new library card. I have to say, my original library card is probably from 1960, something like that, at the Petaluma Library, which is now the museum, Historic Museum downtown. I want you to know that the public library is open seven days a week. Sunday, it's open 1 to 5. So that's really good news. I wish it was when I was a teacher, because we would be sweating out the books for the next week. Anyway, there's lots of resources at the library. And I dropped by the Aqua Storage Recovery Open House that was put on by the Water Department staff at Del Oro Park. The mayor was there, Councilmember Shribbs were there. I was not even knowing what they were talking about, but I know that the mayor and Councilmember Shribbs, and I took a lot of mental notes, but it's amazing what they can do with water engineering. And I watched the swearing in and badge printing with Councilmember Janice Kater Thompson at the very small police station. Can't wait for that new safety station, because there's family and staff and a big celebration for when we have these badging, pinning ceremonies and when we are promoting staff. So I was at the unveiling of the second floor south wing at the Petaluma Valley Hospital. It has been closed for like 20 years, and it's now going to be a recovery rehabilitation for the hip surgeries and other surgeries. And it didn't take very little money. It just took some creativity and some muscle work, and it's really a great addition to our local hospital. I joined the mayor and Councilmember Shribbs at the new gathering circle at Scholmberger. And last but not least, I want to do a shout out and a huge thank you to the Public Works crew that came and got rid of the ivy on Caulfield, power washed those sound walls, and then painted some of the sound walls. It is a huge improvement as you're coming into Petaluma from Lakeville. So thank you very much. I have been asking for this for like three years. So that's all. I hope I didn't take too long.
Lovely. There's just so many outings that we all are at, and so many of us attending the same and really representing strong for the city and all the good stuff that's going on in the city, like the hospital opening that wing again. I'd like to open my comments sort of on a sad note. We've lost former city manager, John Charar. He was a city manager for 15 years, ending in 1997. At next week's meeting, we'll honor him and his many contributions to the city over that period. Also, the mayor and the city are required to receive what's called a state-worn notice whenever a business of 50 or more employees closes or dramatically reduces in size, and we've received another. And it's very disturbing that this happens, but it was a consolidation of a large corporation's satellite office. And I only say this to note that the city is putting increased focus on retention and recruitment of business through our economic development efforts, which I think we'll be hearing more about as the months go on. I also attended the County Homelessness Commission and the Measure O Mental Health Funding Meetings. The gist of it is, the Measure O will be able to cover our Safe Team expenditures this year, which is millions of dollars, but likely not in the future, and likely next year's budget will be quite the challenge to see how we can stay in balance without service cuts. And then the good news is, the county has released the point in time count for homelessness, and perhaps you've seen that article in the paper. There's less than 2,000 homeless persons counted in Sonoma County, and less than 200 in Petaluma. And of the 200, about 100 are in shelters, and 100 aren't in shelters. And that's the magnitude of the problem we're trying to deal with and why the city puts such emphasis on programs to help that problem. I did go to the Scholmberger Gathering Circle ribbon cutting, and I just want to shout out Councilmember Shribbs for such a long pathway, helping with the Petaluma Wetlands Alliance. And it turned into recognition of some of the critical people who have helped over the years. And your eulogy for Al had every eye leaking a tear for the people who've put in the work over the years. And then I just want to appreciate that our city fire department was able to roll out their Wildlands Fire Engine and use it on Wildland Fire here. And that, because of these things, we have updates at council about how our disaster preparedness readiness is. And as you saw in the proclamation tonight, there's just, there's a strong, a lot of strong systems in place and strong plan in place. And I did want to thank the staff who interfaced with the county's Shelter Council, it's called, for Disaster Shelter. It's a countywide group that needs to discuss coordinated goals, and Petaluma hosted that meeting in August, and I'm pretty proud of Petaluma for hosting that. So, and then on a happier note, lighter note, I attended the Petaluma Library and Historical Museums Show, I do. It was exhibiting wedding dresses from their collections dating over the past 100 years. And I have to thank the vice mayor for donating her wedding dress to this exhibit. You can still see it there for a few weeks. And by virtue of doing this, I discovered that three of our council members have the same anniversary date. Not the same year, but the same date. And so, you know, here's to love. And then now to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and community. Just a couple, thank you, Councilmember Shribbs, for mentioning the Petaluma River Craft Beer Festival this Saturday on Water Street. You can still get tickets at petalumarivercraftbeerfest.org, and that's a fundraiser for our local Chamber of Commerce. The City of Petaluma, that we are taking over our aquatics program, we are hiring for part-time lifeguard positions. And we also will provide American Red Cross training to help you obtain your lifeguard certification. So apply online at our city website at cityofpetaluma.org/jobs, or call our Parks and Rec with questions. And then next Saturday at Lucasee, we've got our Parks and Rec movies in the park, and we're going to be showing cars along with our Cruisin' the Boulevard folks. So there will be some classic car displays, Good Eats, and at 6:00 PM, it starts at 6:00 PM, and the movie starts at 7:30. So I hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And that brings us to our consent calendar for the evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And I'd like to look up and down the dais and see if anyone on the dais has a comment or question they need to make of the consent calendar. Seeing none, I'd like to move it over to our clerk, over to our clerk, for messaging and public comment on the consent calendar.
Yes, we did not receive any comments ahead of time, but we do have one card for the consent calendar. And if anyone else would like to speak, they should bring their cards to my desk now if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated.
Ding. Okay. Our speaker tonight would be Kathryn Bobowski on the consent calendar. Thank you. And that closes public comments on the item. Like to bring it back up to the dais. And at this point, we're looking for motion. Councilmember Barnicle?
I'll move items 1 through 10 on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Barnicle and a second by Kater Thompson. And may we have a roll call vote?
Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Aye.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And that brings us into our, glad to have you stay. That brings us into item 11, the second reading of an amending ordinance for the downtown housing and economic opportunity overlay to restore floor area ratio. And in the Petaluma, implementing zoning ordinance to be consistent with the current general plan. And Councilmember DeCarly?
I'll be recusing myself tonight.
Thank you. And for the same...
For the same thing, proximity to my home zone.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'd like to invite our city attorney, Eric Danley, to make the presentation for this second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My remarks will be brief. This is the adoption and second reading of an ordinance that will amend, Ordinance 2900 NCS, that's also known as the Downtown Housing and Economic Opportunity Overlay Zoning Amendment. The reason for this action, as we discussed when this item was introduced and the council adopted an urgency ordinance doing the same thing, is that as a result of referendum activity that successfully suspended a general, the economic opportunity overlay general plan amendment, which only did one thing, it increased the floor area ratio for the downtown. As a result of that referendum activity, it was necessary to reestablish consistency between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, which also made mention of that increased floor area ratio. And in my remarks here, I want to emphasize a couple of things, because there's been some confusion, I think, in the community about the significance of the council's initial action and the significance of this action. So when the council took the action to adopt the overlay legislation, both in the general plan and in the zoning ordinance, in accordance with its policies promoting economic development in the downtown and also preserving economic resources, they did that so that those actions would synchronize, and the general plan amendment and the zoning amendment would take effect at the same time. That is the method that is recommended in the California Planning Law. It is the method that most agencies, including Petaluma, follow, and that we followed with respect to that action. The, so that was a lawful action. And the, both of those actions were taken lawfully. The fact that the general plan amendment was successfully referended doesn't mean that those were unlawful actions. It means that the voters exercised the power of referendum successfully. And similarly, the action that the council took on the zoning ordinance amendment for the overlay was also lawful. And what we are doing tonight is the last step in the actions to restore consistency between the city's general plan and the zoning code as a result of the referendum activity. Another thing I want to briefly emphasize is that there is only one inconsistency in the zoning ordinance that's being amended by this final action tonight and the general plan, and that is with respect to the floor area ratio. There are many other provisions. In fact, almost all, well, actually, literally, all of the council's other downtown housing and economic development policies are in the zoning amendment. And all of those other provisions continue to be lawful and will continue in effect. The only thing that's being amended tonight is the change to eliminate the inconsistency regarding the floor area ratio. So, and that will also have the effect of mooting the challenge that was brought against the zoning ordinance, which challenge I would like to also make clear was directed at the entire ordinance, not just this one inconsistency that the referendum activity created. So that concludes my remarks. Mayor and council will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bringing it up to council, Councilmember Shribbs. Questions?
Yes, just to get some updates and a little bit more transparency, was, is on the referendum. Can we get a status update as to what is the next steps for the referendum process? So we can make that clear. And then the second questions are going to be on the developers of the hotel, EKN, whether or not there's been any communications from them or any intentions as to what their, what their future plans might be for that site, since they're now the owners of that site. So just for clarity, please.
I am gonna, regarding the last part of that question, I want to note that that's beyond the scope of this agenda item. And I think it's best if we address that separately. Also, I don't have a definitive response. I don't think we have a definitive response regarding what the applicants' ultimate plans are, although we continue to be in close communication with them. As to the first part of your question, Councilmember Shribbs, the city council still must decide whether it is going to repeal the general plan amendment for the overlay that has been successfully referended or place it before the voters. And there's no set deadline on making that decision, except that it needs to be done to allow for 88 days before the election at which that item is going to be placed. And if that's going to be at a regular city council election, one where city council seats are up for election, that's not until the 2026 election in November. So there's quite a bit of time, not that the council necessarily wants to take that much time or that the staff would recommend that, but that is the next, that will be the next and the conclusive step in terms of council action regarding the referendum activity.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions? Yeah, that was exactly going to be my question, whether the referendum still achieves its goal of forcing either the council repeal on it or an election, and that, you keep using the word "successful" as they've achieved that goal. And so that's, we're still in the same place. The referendum action is still a binding requirement on the city.
Yes, I didn't mean to say, what's been successful is the suspending of that legislative action and requiring the council to make that choice. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. And so with no other council questions, I'd like to open this, a public comment on this item, and ask the clerk if any emails have come in on this, and take them away.
We did receive a public comment on this item, which is posted on the website. And members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
And not seeing cards coming forward to the clerk's desk, I will close public comment now. Bring it back up to the council. And the council, any deliberation and comments at this point? That's the appropriate part. Councilmember Shribbs?
So I already got my questions asked and answered, so I'd like to move the item.
Second. So we have a motion by Shribbs and a second by Barnicle. And did you have a comment? No comment? Okay. And I'd like to ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Sorry about that. Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly is recused. Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember DeCarly recused.
Thank you very much. May we invite Councilmember DeCarly back into the room? And I'll start reading the title of the next item, item 12, which is an introduction or first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Petaluma to codify the city's civilian public oversight and transparency policies by adding a new chapter 2.50 entitled Public Safety Advisory Committee in the administration title and Title II and repeal and replace resolution number 2024 048 NCS and adding a new chapter 8.01 entitled Independent Police Auditor and a new chapter 8.03 entitled Military Equipment Use Regarding Assembly Bill 481 in the Health and Welfare Title, Title 8 of the Petaluma Municipal Code. And to help us out with this, we have Chief Miller and also our city attorney, Eric Danley. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you. Brian Miller, I'm your police chief presenting the item tonight. I'll try to be brief and walk you through some background slides of three separate resolutions that formed what's our civilian oversight model and walk you through this introductory ordinance that codifies those oversight policies in our municipal code. I just want to start that this has been a goal of the police department and a city council goal and priority. So we're really pleased to bring that back together and back before you and codify something that we've been doing in practice for the last few years and been quite pleased with. Next slide. So the introductory ordinance, what it does is it annexes three chapters, new chapters in the municipal code, specifically adding one for the Public Safety Advisory Committee, another for the Independent Police Auditor, and a third for their military equipment use policies. Next slide. By way of background, just as a reminder, our Public Safety Advisory Committee was established by council in 2024 via a resolution. The enabling resolution addressed the composition, the structure, and the enabling legislation and the charter for that committee. And it includes what the membership will consist of, how regularly they will meet. And thus far, we've had seven meetings since it's been established. Next slide. Effectively, this ordinance will repeal that resolution and codify it as it stands in the enabling legislation in Chapter 2.50 of the municipal code. But as I mentioned, it preserves the enabling legislation provisions regarding all of the same composition, structure, meeting, and context of their scope of work. It does also include some additional flexibility for their reporting structure for ease of the committee's use and reporting back to you all and through our IPA. Next slide. And the benefits of the codification specifically of that resolution is that it'll give more permanency for our civilian oversight ordinances, which require two, by codificating it, it'll require two council votes to amend, whereas resolutions only require just the one reading. It also establishes more visibility for our oversight through placing it in the municipal code where it's easily accessible. And it adds those minor changes that we're now three years into some of these models and we've found some efficiencies and improvements that we wanted to add for their benefit. Next slide. Assembly Bill 41, the Military Equipment Funding Acquisition Use was also enacted through resolution back in 2021, but it was in response to state-approved legislation that required local governments to adopt ordinances governing funding acquisition and use of defined military equipment within our jurisdiction. The policies must be reviewed and reapproved annually, which we've done successfully through you all the last three, three and a half, four years. And we adopted that resolution in 2022, renewed it with, when we added additional equipment in 2023, and just recently presented it a few months ago. Next slide. Codification will really reaffirm what the state legislation requires us to do, covering the types of military equipment, the use of policy requirements, the approval requirements, and annual reporting requirements. But what we have done is also incorporated the direction we received from the dais that required and requested additional information specific to use demographic information, as well as public noticing for the Brown Act requirements that we've been using the Public Safety Advisory to be the conduit for those public meetings in advance of returning the report back to the council. Next slide. The benefits of codifying this section in resolution improves our transparency by incorporating the city's military equipment use again in the municipal code. And it also codifies those two additional requirements or direction that we received and puts them in our local regulations. Next slide. And lastly, the third chapter, we have an independent police auditor. It was approved as part of that holistic civilian oversight hybrid model that came from public discussions in 2020 through 2022 and ad hoc recommendations. We had an RFP process that selected our current IPA integriture in 2023 and included a defined scope of services and then RFP in their contracting. Next slide. The ordinance will be established in Chapter 8.01 that'll govern that the city shall contract with an IPA. It'll include the IPA duties, which generally are to review, advise, audit on our complaints, internal affairs investigations, our policies, procedures, and trainings, critical incidents, and just monitor police conduct and performance and trends, as well as report on and engage with our community and our Public Safety Advisory Committee. They've been reporting and will continue to do so in the legislation with reports to the city manager, to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and to council. And the detailed work scope is established and defined within the municipal code now as well. Next slide. And the benefits of this is that it makes that RFP and contract standing practice in the municipal code. It provides continuity for public safety review, enhances and builds our continued public trust in police practices. And the codification adds just greater transparency defining all the essential elements of both the IPA's role, but as well as our civilian hybrid oversight model. So I will turn it back over to you. That'll conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about this introductory ordinance. But I will just end it with that we have been overwhelmingly pleased. While it's an incredible lift, an amount of work, we are seeing the direct impacts on a daily basis of increased review, discussions, attention to our workflows, our processes, and it's made us a better organization.
Thank you very much. Appreciate getting this to the point where we can get it into code and in a variety of different places. Does the council have questions on this content? I did have one if I could. So the evaluation of the IPA and, you know, the performance review, or even the change in performance wished, I mean, if the IPA is not working the way we wish, does that rest with the chief or does it rest with the city manager? Or is it a direct, how is improvement? We just saw an article in the paper that Ayala and the county relationship is stressed. How, what is the steps for us to remedy a stress situation?
Yeah, so the contract is managed through the city manager's office for all the right reasons, which it would be a little bit improper for me to contract with the individual that is auditing me and reporting to me. And that would also have the potential for conflict if there ever were to be conflict. I will tell you that we have found friction points of areas of disagreement and worked through those. But we have, you know, a positive working relationship. And I'll defer to the city manager. She's getting direct reports and engaging with our police auditor, Jeff Slanger, regularly.
So we work with the IPA throughout the year on those pinch points, but we also get, we review their annual report and kind of go through what, what they've done for the year. And we spend a couple of months before even PSAC sees it to make sure that, you know, if there are any deficiencies, which we haven't seen at this point. But we want to make sure that, that we've got that thorough review every year.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly add, Mr. Mayor, too, you know, I think it's important to remember that this whole process, which we're not formalizing, but we've been following for a while, bolsters and also continues the civilian oversight we've already had for years regarding our police department, including the city attorney's office and the city manager's office and council, because we report to council, of course. And so we continue to be, it's Jordan Green in my office who participates in the meetings with the IPA. We continue to do policy review along with the IPA after action reviews. So all those strengths that we already had, we still have, and now they're enhanced by additional parallel but independent review by the IPA. So that is also part of the contract management and implementation. Like any good contract program, we have to have strong management on the city's part to ensure we're getting the performance we're supposed to. And I think with those tools and very protective contract mechanisms in our standard services agreement that we have in all arrangements, we're in a good position to address any issues. There haven't been any, any, any serious ones.
And this thought comes to mind partially in context with grand jury saying, you know, you need to change a certain department. And I'm thinking, what is the vehicle for unhappiness in this stress? But I am really glad to see the enabling legislation for PSAC, the Public Safety Advisory Committee, codified. I mean, to many of the committees, when they get long in tooth, the enabling legislation doesn't stay current or isn't familiar to the new committee member. So having it here where we can distribute it, that's a real great step forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I just want to say, as the, I'm the second liaison, because I filled in for Dennis Postacay when he left the council. So they are very informative and the auditor presents our committee with the findings and we are able to ask questions. And there's very good dialogue on when we have questions. There's lots of language that we don't understand in the report, and that is very well explained at the meetings. And I think the one-year update is coming to the council next month for the PSAC?
No, no. Next month, we're actually, there's been a lot of public comment and commentary from the council on traffic enforcement and trends. And so that's actually going to be the discussion item this month. And then as a reminder, the PSAC is working collectively over the next six months to build their first kind of annual report out that'll consist of about an 18-month period. So we're building over, meeting over meeting.
18 months, okay. I thought it was one year.
We're going to true it up so it comes back on an annual basis for easier report writing or reporting. And also, one of those additions in here in the codification was flexibility and ease of reporting. We're trying to untether some of the committee from some of the report writing functionality and incorporate that through the IPA annual report and have staff assist them with preparing that, that report based on their direction.
Thank you, because I thought it was the one-year anniversary. So it's 18 months. Okay, I'm corrected. Thanks.
Okay. And I'd like to open it to public comment and ask the clerk to help us with that.
We did not receive any public comment ahead of time on this, and I don't have any cards. But if someone would like to make a comment, this is the moment.
And seeing no one bringing cards to the clerk, we will close public comment on this item, bring it back to the council. And before asking for a motion, I just want to note, we've seen, the police department's had a very busy week and longer. And I think when the public notices it, it's because there are really bad actions in the community that need strong police action. And we really appreciate the safety the department provides for us. And we also recognize the stress that some of these situations put on the officers and appreciate their efforts in being the police for our city. So thank you very much.
Is that motion?
And with that, we have a motion from Kater Thompson?
Second.
Second from Barnicle. And a roll call vote, please.
Barnicle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you. That brings us to, thank you very much, Chief, for the report. That brings us to resolutions approving three responses to the Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury and titled Local Fees, Local Subsidies, Who Can Afford to Live in Petaluma County, and Animal Services in Sonoma County. And to help us with this, we have our Assistant City Manager, Brian Cochran. Take it away.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Mayor and council members. Item 13 before you tonight seeks approval to finalize and transmit city's responses to those three reports that the mayor just mentioned from the Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury, in which Petaluma was either required to submit a response or invited to submit an optional response. So by way of background, the Civil Grand Jury is an independent body of 19 individuals who are selected annually to serve one-year terms. The grand jury is charged with investigating complaints about local government operations and may also initiate its own investigations into matters concerning any city, county, or special district in Sonoma County. And then each June, after having completed its investigations for the year and documenting those findings in a series of reports, the reports are released to the public. Each government entity that is cited or mentioned in each of the reports is then typically required to respond to the findings in the report, as well as recommendations that may be made by the grand jury for improvement. And we have a 90-day time period in which to generate that response and submit it to the grand jury. So for each finding, as you see in the proposed response documents attached to the agenda item, the city must state which findings it agrees with, which findings it partially disagrees with or wholly disagrees with, and then supplementary explanation as to why there may be disagreement on that finding. And then similarly, for each recommendation, we must state if the recommendation has already been implemented, will be implemented in the future, will not be implemented, and why, or if it requires further study prior to implementation. So the first report that's listed in the packet tonight is entitled Local Fees, Local Subsidies. And it was an exploration of various recent fee increases at several Sonoma County cities and providing contrast between cities that have had substantial increases in fees versus cities who make it a policy of regularly increasing fees as costs increase, thereby making each year's increase relatively small compared to not doing any increases for many years and then having a large spike in those, in those fees. Petaluma was highlighted in this report and was required to respond to finding number one and recommendation number one. And as you see in the proposed draft response, we agreed with both of those, both finding number one. And our existing process that we already utilize for regular annual fee increases was already encompassed in the recommendation. So we're good to go there. One quick edit I will mention, a council member pointed out that in the response document itself, it says that we agree with F1 and we have already implemented F1. That second piece should have said implemented R1, meaning recommendation one. So we'll So we'll make that edit in the final report that we transmit to the Grand Jury. So I think we'll pause there and hand it back to the mayor and council if there are any questions on the fees report, and then I'll move on to the subsequent ones.
Thank you for that. And council, any questions? Actually, I think we can do this in a questions and comments at the same time because I think we they're the same thing. And looking up and down the dais, see whether anyone wants to weigh in on fees. And I just appreciate that we do the fees every year and we're on the good side of this issue. So that's real positive. And I think we're back to you for for the next piece. Take it away.
Sounds good. Thank you. The second report was entitled Who Can Afford to Live in Sonoma County? It contrasts the policies, practices, and financing tools for the creation of affordable housing between two different Sonoma County cities, Healdsburg and Runner Park. Petaluma was not required to respond to this report. However, the Grand Jury invited all nine cities to submit an optional response to recommendation number two, which recommends the creation of an affordable housing collaborative countywide to share best practices around affordable housing creation. So we we did generate a proposed short response to this recommendation, which we do agree with, and we're happy to participate in said collaborative when it's formed. And that response is also here for your review and approval tonight. So see if there are any questions or comments on that one before we move on.
Anyone want to weigh in on housing? I mean, other than the fact it's horrible and, you know, very expensive to live here, which prohibits a lot of your young people from staying in the community and but then we've said this before. I do I do want to thank the city for the housing element that we put out and all the aggressive policies that are in the housing element to try and address things. And I would also like to note that Petaluma's affordable housing achievement is doing very well relative to other other areas we're achieving. We're unfortunately, that's just such a small number that it doesn't really it's not impactful the way we wish it was impactful. But our our fee structure for the affordable housing, I think, led the way in the county for that kind of activity, too. So other comments, questions on housing? And I think we're back to you for the third element.
Sounds good. So the third report was entitled Animal Services in Sonoma County. And this report provides an overview of all publicly funded animal services providers in Sonoma County, including Petaluma's provider, North Bay Animal Services, or often abbreviated NBAS. The report contains a number of observations about NBAS, their performance, their funding levels, overall span of control, as well as improvements that should be made to the shelter and their performance on dog licensing, among other things. The city was required to respond to all of the findings except for F4 and F5 and all of the recommendations except for recommendation number three. So in summary, on this one, the city is in agreement with all of the recommendations, and we have either already completed a few of them or we are in the process of completing. And in the longer response document, we have outlined some timelines for when we believe those recommendations will be completed. As for the findings, the proposed response states that the city is in agreement with F8, F9, and F10, and then has a partial disagreement with the remaining findings. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of those. So the reasons for the partial disagreement with many of the findings other than F8, 9, and 10, those reasons are explained in significantly more detail in attachment nine to the staff report, which contains our entire proposed response. In summary, there are a variety of reasons, certain findings. So as for example, certain findings read as an opinion, which that opinion may be valid and true, but is sometimes difficult to verify. So then it's difficult to agree with the entire finding. Others appear incorrect, or perhaps there was a misunderstanding by the Grand Jury on that particular finding. And then for others, we agree with the theory or the sentiment that's being expressed in the finding, but disagree sometimes there's a cause and effect relationship that's cited in the finding. That is the reason for a particular issue being so, and we may disagree on that piece of it. But despite those areas of disagreement, we do agree with the overall thrust of the report that there are some performance issues with NBAS as it is currently operating and that those issues can and should be resolved. Having excellent animal services is critically important to Petaluma, and we believe we can make improvements and continue to get better. We owe that to the community and to our animals. As noted in the report, we have engaged a third-party local consultant to assist the city and NBAS in several areas. They will be looking at the overall organizational structure and how to improve oversight, shelter operations and animal care improvements, behavioral assessments and staff training, and licensing and rabies control performance. We are hopeful that with the consultant's recommendations, we can work with NBAS to make the needed improvements. That said, while not formally documented as a Grand Jury finding, the Grand Jury did discuss at length in their report the financial realities of providing animal services, namely that NBAS's overall public funding on a per capita basis is significantly lower than some of its sister agencies in Sonoma County. And just as a reminder, when Petaluma first contracted with NBAS in 2018, the contract was fixed at the same amount that the prior animal services provider had been paid. And so in all, that funding has not increased for over a decade, so no cost of living adjustment, no inflator, anything like that, with the exception of the amendment that the current administration made in 2020 to allow for NBAS to retain their the licensing fee revenue that they collect on behalf of the city to boost their overall funding. In staff's regular meetings with NBAS, we have consistently and repeatedly asked them for proposals to help right-size their funding and obtain needed resources, but have never received such a proposal from them on that funding question. This current contractual funding amount no longer appears to be sustainable while maintaining high-quality services. And this observation foreshadows that improving animal services moving forward in Petaluma, whether it's through NBAS or through another provider in the future, may require a substantial increase in the city's overall contribution from the general fund to be able to support those services at a high-quality level. Staff will be recommending a request for proposal process early in 2026 to solicit proposals from any interested animal services providers to be able to assess our options and the costs for those options as we come up on the contract expiration date of July 31, 2026. So I'll just close my comments by reiterating the city's strong commitment to our community and our animal services. We appreciate the Grand Jury's recommendations and are working steadfastly to make the recommended improvements in the areas highlighted by the Grand Jury. So with that, we're happy to dive into any of the responses or the findings and recommendations in more detail and answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to bring it back up onto the dais to provide a little feedback there. And Councilmember Shribbs?
Good. Thank you. I think we're pretty much tracking pretty well as what we need to do and where we're going with this, looking for the major improvements. So just a couple of questions. So the consultant that looks like expert is coming in who has been dealing with this for for a long time, has lots of expertise in it. Is the city paying for this consultant, or is that coming under the the contract services cost?
The city is paying for the consultant.
Okay, the city is providing this extra service now. So we are putting extra help. And so this person that's going to be coming in and helping, are they actually going to start doing some of the administrative work that seems to be missing or not being not happening at the rate it should be happening? Are they going to come in and help do that or just advise on how to do it?
So, yeah, the intent is not for the consultant to actually do the work. It's really to assess the operation, assess the organization, the shelter, the the building itself, and make recommendations on how to improve, how to restructure, what additional resources may be available, and how to improve overall oversight of of the provider and the operations.
Okay, so the contract's coming up sometime in 2026, this next this next coming year. And and so with these recommendations, will we have the opportunity for those recommendations, if they come early enough, that we can actually make something happen and to up the contract and change it between now and 2026 so that things are will be happening, not just advising about it, not just making something happen? And then in 2026, we will open it up again for a new contract, either for the same folks or new folks to come in. And then we'll redo expectations on the contract to bring everything up to where it needs to be.
Correct.
Okay, so so we're going in the right direction. The city's helping out with money, some some consultant coming in to help. And then we're going to have the opportunity to make it better even before contract is up. So all these are good things that the city will be doing.
Yeah, so the intent is for the the consulting to be occurring over the next three to four months, so by the end of the calendar year, and then that can be implemented hopefully quickly after that.
Over quickly so that we can make something happen even before the end of the contract at that point. That's why I make sure that we actually can make the changes that we need to make, not just talk about them over the period of time here. But thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for the information. And to add on to Councilmember Shribbs' question, the volunteers I spoke to, they had a lot of complaints about, you know, our community is so generous that there is a lot of donations and they're unsolicited, whether it's cans of animal food or shelter, bedding, leashes, whatever. They like to just leave them at the doorstep of our animals' shelter. And they're the volunteers are overwhelmed. So is there in the contract with the NBAS to have them a volunteer group that that meets regularly and just because the last time I was on council, we had our own city committee. And that's what we talked to a lot was the volunteers and how they interacted with the community, like donations. But we don't have that oversight anymore. So what do we do have? Can we explain to the general public and myself what we do have?
So I may ask Mark Scott to come up and and address this if he wants to fill in. But the NBAS definitely does benefit from the services of a lot of volunteers, as well as, as you said, a lot of donations. I know they operate the the food donation program. You can come up and pick up free food if, you know, say, for example, you can't afford your dog or cat food that month, those sorts of services. And and I know that they are always welcoming and those are beneficial for the the overall operation. But yes, agreed, if there there is not enough volunteers to handle the, you know, the volume of things coming through, that that could be challenging. So I don't know, Mark, do you want to fill in any details on the volunteer program at all?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members and staff. Yes, we do have quite a few volunteers, about 60 right now, about 144 slots a month that get filled through volunteering two hours a week or two hours a day. Many of them want to do laundry, cat cleaning. I mean, we have every possible scenario that you can do if you want to volunteer. Definitely, we do have a great pet pantry program where people who want to donate drop off items that we kind of reconfigure and can hand out to people who need with no questions asked. You just come and you can get what's needed, one, two bags, depending on your dog size. We even have some people who have special needs for their, like my dog's sensitive stomach, and we have stuff for that. So, yes, we have a great volunteer program. It is a lot of stuff, but we're doing a lot of work with it. So it's it seems like a lot and can be overwhelming to some, but the outcome is is too great to not go through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Quint?
Sure, I just, you know, for, you know, for my, you know, for my understanding and really for the broader public understanding, do we have any critical services that are not being met currently that we feel like we need to take immediate action to resolve?
I don't believe that we do. I feel like a lot of the report was, again, kind of focused on performance, increasing the licensing percentage of the overall number of dogs in the community that have their rabies vaccine, making some improvements to the shelter, specifically the the building and the facilities. We have already started that process. We've gotten some improvements checked off the list, and we have we have the rest of the list to still go through. There were some comments about, you know, different aspects of not meeting certain standards. So that's one of the things that the consultant will be looking at. But to answer your question, no, I don't believe there are any specific critical services that are just simply not being met at this point in time.
Got it. So it feels to me like our animal services are functioning. There's probably some things that could be improved upon, and some of that may be a result of just years and years of no increases in fees or anything that, you know, we as a, you know, a city body can really work to improve over the next year when the time comes to really revisit it holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I think I might comment that, you know, obviously, nobody likes to get a report from the Grand Jury, you know, because inherently it means kind of you made some disconnect with the public at some point. And and I think that agreement, city staff agreement with so many points of the Grand Jury report really points out how how much work needs to go into this to to get us right again. I do think that certainly we started NBAS in difficult times and with, I mean, you really can't achieve program goals with funding that won't meet it. And then we had COVID, and then people and their animals changed during COVID, the behavior of people and the need for animals and and the relationship to animals changed during COVID. So I see where we've gone into a place where we need to pivot and and make improvements. I kind of feel like the funding put us in a place, the classic place where you're working so hard to do the day job, you should never have time for strategic thinking, you never have time for getting that next step and and having good programming in place, I mean, strategic programming in place. And I think maybe that's the role of the board, and I'm not sure if we've talked about that kind of encouragement in in our feedback to NBAS. But but I but I but I think that some strategic planning like that is necessary. And and I really appreciate Councilmember Shribbs' comment, setting expectations. I think that the development of that RFP early in the year will drive a lot of the expectations, getting us to end of existing contract so that everyone's aware what the city's expectations are, you know, and it's right out there in public. So we'll have metrics for achievement. And and the challenge will be, of course, funding that RFP. I've mentioned that next year's budget is going to be challenging. Here's one more area where we could probably have a hit. The Grand Jury report acknowledges other cities have pay higher costs. Do we have like an order of magnitude of what we think other cities are paying compared to ours? Is there some sort of estimate? If we paid what other cities are paying, how much more is that than currently are paying?
Yeah, it it could be as much as twice as much, maybe not quite that high, but a significant increase.
And that's several hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, several hundred thousand or more on an annual basis out of the general fund.
And that's sort of independent of the capital necessary to make the facility ship shape, which some other?
Correct. Those would be more one-time investments. And I know that the Grand Jury didn't mention it, but the fleet of the animal services and animal control vehicles is aging and is going to potentially need some replacements. So.
Would the fleet be in the contract?
No, sorry, the fleet, meaning the trucks.
Would the fleet be in the services contract?
Yeah, so we can outline in that RFP kind of what the status of the vehicles is and what the expectation is on funding replacements for those vehicles.
Currently, the city own vehicles used by the program, or does NBAS own their own vehicles?
I believe they own the vehicles. Mark, do you want to speak to that one?
Currently, we have three animal Currently, we have three animal control trucks that the city owns. One of them is complete, the motor is dead. Several other vehicles we own that we purchased outside through, we call it an auction site that would, is much cheaper for us to buy than the city would to replace it. I think in 2012, you paid like 75,000 for one of our trucks, and we were able to get the same truck, and it was less than 15,000. So we can kind of make the money stretch a lot further and still get the same usage out of it.
You knew what my question was about.
It's what we do best, basically.
Thank you. Councilmember Shrib?
Yeah, one thing I didn't really spot in the report and what's not mentioned, is there a board of directors, an advice committee that actually helps the administration of the organization? Or is it just NBAS and then our staff that are actually coordinating things? Is there another group of body anywhere here that should be taking some responsibility for what's going on?
Yeah, so NBAS does have a board. They are a nonprofit organization that has a board, yes.
Okay, good. So didn't see any mention in there, is the board functioning well and is it the right people? And so apparently, if things are not going well, is there appropriate communications? Do we need to reevaluate how the functioning of that board since this report's now come out, which implies to me that they're not doing their job properly?
Well, I'm not quite sure how to respond to that, other than to say that the grand jury did jointly cite, in terms of the oversight piece specifically, jointly cite the city needs to improve and the board, you know, also needs to improve. So they were kind of holding us accountable both on that piece, yes.
Right, because I don't, is the board here or is representatives of the board here?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so that's, again, they should have been here like that. So I'm kind of missing that piece, and so I'm not kind of going, because with other nonprofits, much more participation and taking of responsibility for things. So that's, I'm just missing that at the moment, and I'd like to see a little bit more action from them and proposals to us and working a little bit more closely with our staff. Because instead of our staff should be doing the investigations, the board should be doing all that and reporting to us also, asking for help if they need the help. That's apparently not happening, so.
Can I ask that in a form of a different question, is that, does our consultant have the latitude to take a look at that with them?
I would say so, yes.
So hopefully, we'll, in our development towards the RFP stage, that'll be included.
Yes, thank you.
And any other questions, comments here? Then I'd like to ask the clerk to open a public comment.
We did receive three public comments ahead of the meeting, and those are posted online. I've also received two cards, but if anyone else would like to speak, please bring your speaker cards to my desk. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Sierra Morantz, and to be followed by Constance Bay.
Do I have three minutes?
You do have three minutes.
Okay. All right. I think most of the officials in this room are already aware of, you know, my story, but I'm sharing this publicly tonight because not enough has been done to address it, and I don't want anyone else to go through what I have gone through. My experience with North Bay Animal Services is consistent with the group findings of the grand jury and substantiates their claims on multiple points. In June 2024, I was attacked and bitten by a dog in an unprovoked attack while walking down a city sidewalk in Petaluma. I received wounds that have left permanent scarring on my left breast. When Petaluma Police Department responded to my 911 call and turned me over to Mark Scott from NBAS, and I filled out a report and sent photographic evidence of my injuries, I implicitly trusted them. I had every expectation NBAS would do their job, and I have continued to have that expectation. But in my opinion, they have not. For over five months, NBAS did not respond to my numerous messages and calls and in-person visit as I requested information about the steps being taken and documents about the dog in question. Information only started coming through in November 2024 after I started ceasing the city officials, so thank you for that. To date, despite my continued requests and public records requests that have been closed, the information I have received is still incomplete, and NBAS says they need more time. Last Friday, one of the records that I received for the first time was dated June 3, 2024. It's an NBAS record, so I cannot fathom why it has taken over a year to produce it and why it wasn't released as part of my public records request. I find this raises serious questions about how documentation is created and retained. My injuries in June 2024 met the threshold for a potentially dangerous or dangerous dog per the Petaluma Municipal Code, but NBAS did not take any steps toward making that designation at that time, to my knowledge, or the documentation I've received. Attempted attacks reported by another neighbor didn't do anything, although it pushed that dog's designation into dangerous dog territory. That case was closed. Other neighbors have told me their emails and calls to NBAS in subsequent months have not been returned either. As far as I can tell, NBAS only started to take action December 2024 after additional incidents were raised and the city got involved. Documentation is still lacking. My story and the issue of animal control is emotional, I recognize that, but the root of it is that this is a city contractor paid to perform a service. There's questions being raised about if that service is being provided, and based on my individual experience, I would have to say it is not. Petaluma deserves better, and I hope that you all, as elected officials and city employees, you're willing to make that happen and take steps for whatever is best for the city of Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you. Constance Bay, to be followed by John Hanania.
Good evening. I'm glad to hear the city of Petaluma is very interested in providing humane care and safe care to all of our animals. I don't know if your respect for the grand jury is as at the level as mine is. It was really disappointing to read that, you know, some of our response to the report is that Petaluma noted NBAS as a new nonprofit, needs time to develop a functioning animal services, needs more time, and they've been in this position since 2018. I know we went through a pandemic, I know there's some issues with financial stuff, but it was just disheartening to read that back in 2017, we had the opportunity to go with Marin Humane, and at that point, Mark Scott was fired, and in his termination letter, according to the Argus Courier, it was cited a general dereliction of duties, pattern of dishonesty. That's pretty much kind of what the grand jury report is saying. Things like documentation of the numerous bite incidents, which, God, hearing to your story is very, is very hard to hear. I mean, 350 to 370 bite incidents a year, insufficient documentation, all it takes is one, and then dogs not getting their rabies shots. All it takes is one kid who gets bit by one of these dogs that's not adequately confined, so we don't even know if that kid's going to get rabies or that adult. They have to go through rabies treatment, which is not fun. That happened to a neighbor of mine in Glen Ellen with a little kid, and they actually just had a cat that didn't have a rabies vaccine. So, and all the other things, odor, poor ventilation, incomplete protocols for sanitation, care of animals, it's like we're the worst animal shelter in the county. And dogs are being placed in foster homes like my daughter's, wasn't spayed, others are not neutered. It took them two years to finally adopt their dog. The vet that did surgery on this dog did not agree with what Mark Scott had agreed to pay for for the surgery. Mark Scott wanted that dog's leg amputated. The vet said, no, we're not doing that, we're doing this other repair. So it just, when I hear stories like that, and that is firsthand from a family member, plus what you had said, it's just disheartening to see that we're, I'm glad to hear, we're looking at other contracts, and maybe it's going to cost more money, but to continue with someone who's had this amount of time to get it together, still doesn't have proper training protocols for their employees? I guess my time's up. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. John Hanania is our last speaker for public comment.
Good evening. Well, as we all know, there's no such a thing as perfect in this world. But I can tell you, I visit that shelter very frequently, and my experience with that shelter has been nothing but positive. I had one incident where two dogs clashed at Tractor Supply, and one of them was mine, if you recall, my Italian Mastiff, who passed away about three weeks ago. And the animal shelter handled that very well. We actually ended up in court, but they handled it very well. The staff has always been very pleasant. I'm almost there every week. I don't know how many of you, we all remember the late mayor Patricia Holigas, when she had thanked one of the community member for their donation to improve that shelter, when the dogs were just laying in the dirt with no overhang. So Petaluma Animal Shelter came a long way from where it was to where it is now, and one of the things that I do appreciate about that shelter is no kill zone. I'm an animal person, I love animals, I get along with animals better than I get along with human, and my dogs are my kids. So their service has always been very pleasant. There's not a single dog that goes out of there or get licensed without the certificate of the rabies and all the shots, and I know that for a fact, okay? And, you know, one of the other things I'd like to point out to you, and I know the police department in here, we had a canine dog, it was Petaluma canine dog, that was so aggressive that nobody wanted that dog, had bit several people. Mark took that dog in, worked with him for, I believe, four months to calm that dog down, to make sure that dog, somebody could adopt him, and I do believe he delivered the dog himself. So I don't want to see it to go to Marin County. I've been to Marin County Animal Shelter. Marin County Animal Shelter, all it does is promote backyard breeder. You can adopt a child a lot easier than you can adopt an animal from Marin County Shelter. So I do appreciate what the animal shelter service is, and I also, there's one animal, one animal shelter, I do appreciate, the one on Highway 12. I visit that very frequently, and I've actually adopted dogs from both shelters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That closes public comment on the item of the night. Bringing it back up to council, comments. Councilmember Shrib?
At this point, I'd go with a motion to move this item and accept the reports as written.
Thank you. Before I ask for a second, I'd like to just double check any other comments. Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I have comments. So things that I note, the dollars per 10,000 that are in the, that are cited in there, obviously, it's one of the lower-cost operations. But the things that concern me, the 350 to 370 dog bites, that, you know, that's alarming because I didn't realize there's that many dog bites, but the part that's alarming is just that, you know, in the middle of a grand jury investigation, we weren't able to furnish evidence that we, that would address that. That's concerning when you're being, when you're, when the grand jury's looking at us and we're not able to provide that evidence. It's concerning the Sierra story. Thank you for sharing it. I'm sorry that happened to you, and I'm sorry for the experience afterwards. I don't necessarily have any gripes with the care of the animals that are there. I haven't heard any complaints about the people who care for the animals and how they're treated. I think that's, you know, that is not really even, you know, maybe there's some things about odor and things like that, but when you've got a bunch of animals in one place, odor happens, I'm not as concerned about that. What I am concerned about is the responsiveness in the documentation. The example of having something from June 3, 2024 and just getting that, that's serious concerns about document record retention. Our city clerk knows a lot about document and record retention, but it's really concerning that we have an organization that's providing the service and they aren't, they don't have that documents. They're not, it's concerning that we've asked for increased budget for that so that we can increase the level of service, and we haven't gotten any responses from that. These are, these are things like that I take seriously. I take seriously because that impacts real people, and I think that, you know, I'm glad that we're doing an RFP. I'm glad that it's going to come back before the council in there. I have strong opinions. I noticed that the existing service levels that we have are all about how many animals can fit in the facility and this and that, not much about the level of service that we provide to the community when we have cases like a dog bite, and I want to see a lot more around that when we write the RFP. I hope that the consultant that we're working with right now is not just working on, like, how to, how to address the issues with NBAS, but how to address the issues with animal services within our community. How do they interface with the police department? How do they interface with the city staff? How do things get escalated and resolved? Because some of the things that I've noticed is that we, you know, all roads lead back to NBAS, and that's for people who aren't getting responsive service, that's a real problem. When you are going through and dealing with dog bites and things like that, and you're not getting a response, and then you have to go back and you're not getting that response, that's a real problem. So it's not the level of service that the city of Petaluma strives for. I know that, and I, so I'm happy to second the responses because that's, it's a procedural item, and we need to make these responses. But this RFP, I'm going to be really, you know, interested in seeing the findings from the consultant, seeing how they get baked into the RFP that we put out, how we structure the evaluation criteria, and how we make sure that we increase the level of service from this organization, even if it means costing more. Like, that's the things, I, if things are going to cost more, that's a political decision, but when things like this get brought to us, it's not a political decision. That's just, you know, we are not, not getting the, what we, what we're expecting. So I'm happy to second it, but I wanted to make those comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
I appreciate all the comments made, and I appreciate Brian Barn, Councilmember Barnacle's comments on the RFP and just about, well, basically, what I really want to say is I had an incident with a dog that bit a family member's arm to the bone, and it was a really vicious dog, and the ruckus was unbelievable, and I called to find out what to do, and I didn't get anywhere. And with our animal service, and I felt as though it was egregious that they didn't take the dog in for 10 days. We had to find a vet that would put, we had the dog put down, and we just had no guidance at all. And I don't throw around that I was on the city council, I just called, didn't say anything, didn't say my name, but I felt as though I did not get the service that we needed. And we had to find it out for ourselves, and it was pretty traumatizing if you saw what this arm looked like. And then when I see the photos that were sent to us, I mean, that's what happens. And I think that it's really important that we take this seriously and make improvements and then go out for the RFP in the future when the contract is up. It's have a timeframe ahead of time so we're prepared. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I really want to thank Councilmember Barnacle and Councilmember Kater Thompson for bringing up very important, we want safe streets, we want safe sidewalks, but a dog or an animal is, keeping our pedestrians and our residents safe has to start everywhere, not just with vehicles, but also animals. And I'm also very concerned about animals off-leash. I go to many parks with my grandkids and sporting events, and I see animals off-leash. I I go to many parks with my grandkids and sporting events, and I see animals off-leash, and there's just not enough signage or enforcement. And that's very unfortunate, because when there is a child or an adult who gets traumatized by an animal bite or scare or anything or attack, it goes with them their entire life, and it's very sad. And then when I hear from volunteers that they don't feel that they are given the tools to organize donations that are coming from generous community members. And 20 years ago, we had an actual council member who was a liaison to the animal committee and brought back information monthly on all sorts of it. It wasn't just cats and dogs, it was, and 20 years ago, pigs that were in in neighborhoods. So if anybody remembers that, it was a whole nother chapter. But anyway, I really want us to have some accountability for our animal services, and I'm glad we're we're making the steps going forward, that we really need to have some sort of monthly accountability. As we go into this next contract, we're going to be looking at it with bigger, I think, emotions going into it, because this is serious. That's a lot of dog bites in one year.
Thank you. I couldn't concur more. I thank Ms. Morantz for being here tonight and telling her story in public. As as she knows, that incident happened right around the corner from my house, where my grandkids play, and and like you say, no, you know, that that's a scar scarring, mentally scarring, physically scarring for life, no one wants that. But there's two parts to the problem, there is that, there is the leash, et cetera, but the administrative failure to to provide the documentation and the after-action, that's got to change so that neither of those two things repeat, that experience doesn't repeat. I wouldn't like to address, Ms. Bay, that the grand jury report, and the grand jury will not fix this. It's a huge call for the city and for North Bay Animal Services to to fix this. The report back to the to the grand jury is our commitment that we will fix it and and that it's now on city shoulders to, and NBAS shoulders, to right now, get action going. And we have a a motion from Shribz and a second from Barnacle and a comment from Quint.
Yeah, really quick. Sierra's story, you know, it it, you know, it connected with me, and I think if we, you know, I would love it if someone could take a look at that and report back to council, really kind of a summary of what the failures were, because I do think that needs to be addressed. And so, you know, if that's possible, I would love to see it, and that's my comment.
Could that come in the form of a city summary back to NBAS with where we think they're falling down in this case? Does that work for you?
Yes, so much as if we get an opportunity to see it as well.
Yeah, right. Councilmember Shribz?
One more suggestion is, we keep saying, city staff is engaged and involved in doing things, is for the public particularly, is there someone on city staff that they should be emailing or communicating with, who's going to be in charge here on city staff to actually be the the front person to to follow through with everything here right now?
Right now, that would be myself.
Okay, so they could send you the emails or comments?
Correct.
And you can deal with it directly?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make it clear as to who they should contact, so that there is someone here, not just staff out there.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for a vote.
And and we'll ask the clerk to have our roll call vote. Call the question.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribz?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And before we close tonight, you know, it's been pointed out to to me that this week is the Memorial Day for September 11, 9/11, and we have not formally recognized it in the other way, and I do want to give, did you wish to add to that, or does that sum it up pretty?
That sums it up pretty good. I was just going to say that, yeah, three days from now is the anniversary of 9/11. You know, we lost thousands of Americans that day, and all of us felt the pain that many still live with from the horrible attacks. And so I wanted us to close tonight's meeting out of respect and in memory of all those Americans that lost their lives.
Thank you. And as a Coast Guard city, they've invited us onto base on 9/11 for their ceremony. We'll we'll have representatives on base for their ceremony. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.